Good evening. The Board has been in closed sessions since 6:15 for employment of employee and approval of closed session minutes. We have six Board members present, one absent. Let's rise for the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we'll start with public comments. We have Jessica Johannan first.
Hello, I'm Jessica and I'm president of International Club at York High School. A little bit about International Club is that we do cultural presentations, ethnic food tastings, we plan International Fest, which is an event coming up March 24th, and we have discussions about global issues and ideas. Our ultimate purpose is to educate the York student body about the wide variety of ethnicities of the world and promote cultural diversity at York High School and in the Elmhurst community. On behalf of this club and other language clubs at York like Spanish, Italian, French, and Chinese Club, we would like to propose a trip to Costa Rica over the summer. We had been planning this trip for over a year and know that this has been denied by the Board before, but we'd like to pursue the potential idea of a trip. Our mission is to begin a student travel program to Costa Rica in which students and chaperones will have the unique opportunity to fully immerse themselves in an entirely new culture, offer their time through volunteer service to their communities, and ultimately deepen their understanding of life beyond the U.S. in a way that the classroom here cannot. If we were to do this trip, we have already thoroughly planned the entire layout and schedule of what we'll be doing every day, the pricing, the travel service agency we'll be using, and the chaperones who will be attending with us. The District 205 Mission Statement states that they are to meet the educational needs of all students, challenging each to his or her full potential and ensuring a foundation for future success in life. A student travel program will positively challenge us by exposing us to something we aren't normally used to and will allow us to immerse ourselves in a new culture that we have learned about in school. It will also lead us to consider study abroad options in college and allow Spanish-taking students to apply their knowledge of the language in a native setting. We ask that you reconsider your decision of denying this trip and that you look at all the benefits that student travel has for our students at York. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Maggie McGee and I have participated in two mission trips to Central America thus far. I've traveled to Nicaragua where I worked in a medical clinic for a week, and to Guatemala where I worked in construction. On these trips, I've learned so much about the Latin American culture and met so many amazing people. I've tried foods I would have never have considered here at home and partaken in Central American traditions I will never forget. But most importantly, I became aware of how remarkably different life is outside of the U.S. These trips have also been wildly beneficial for my Spanish fluency as I often translated for other volunteers and learned Spanish dialect that is not taught in the classroom. I am offered these amazing service opportunities through a church organization, but unfortunately, you must be a member of the church to receive them. A school-led trip will ensure that anyone who is interested will be able to participate in such an amazing opportunity.
Hello, my name is Hasha Zachariah and I'm the Vice President of International Club. Our club has reached out to other schools and towns nearby who have allowed student travel in order to help us understand how incorporating a study abroad opportunity has impacted the learning environment in their schools. The principal of Lake Forest High School, Ms. Holland, stated, "It is important to expose students to different ways of being, thinking, and acting to expand our understanding of self and the world." Dr. Jay Lawrence, the Department Chair of World Languages in Hinsdale Central, stated, "As language teachers, most of us truly fell in love with the language and culture during our travel abroad experiences. To really understand another culture, you have to live it." And the Fine Arts Division Chair at Lyons Township expressed that, "I can't think of any downside to student travel. Yes, it's scary and for the first time, it will be a nervous experience for students, teachers, parents, and administrators, but the benefits far outweigh the risk. Living in Elmhurst, we're not exposed to the many different cultures around the world." And our club believes that by taking part in this trip, students can gain many benefits like a better understanding and acceptance of other cultures. Having this opportunity will allow students to welcome the idea of travel and inspire them to participate in service projects in other places as well. Lastly, we know that liability and safety is a main concern. However, if approved, a Spanish teacher will be going with us on this trip, which is useful since most of them have studied abroad in Spain before and are highly proficient in the language. The World Language Department Chairs from Hinsdale Central also stated that the benefits of traveling with a high school trip is that mostly being guided by teachers and that have experience abroad in the language, they have navigated being a visitor of another country and can help facilitate the positive experience. If we are allowed to go on this trip, students and especially chaperones will work together to make this an efficient and memorable experience. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Marissa Krilich and I'm a member of International Club at York High School. I joined this club because I'm very interested in learning about the wide range of cultures that make up this earth. There are 7 billion people in this world and only 300 million of them live in the United States. That means we are limited in our thinking and we are limited in our experiences. And because of that narrow scope, we are at a disadvantage in a world driven by globalization. I will be competing for a job with people all over the world, as will most of us once we graduate college. Of course, Google can help me learn about other countries, people, and their ways of operating, but the only way each of us will truly open our minds to the lifestyles and ways of other countries is to embed ourselves in it and learn it firsthand. Those experiences are going to be a staple in our futures as the businessmen and women of America. Traveling is a humbling experience and makes you realize the world is not all about you. You are thrown into cultures and experiences outside of your comfort zone and you soon realize how big the world really is. When you travel at a young age, it changes the way you relate to the world. When you travel, you see things you never knew existed or could exist and you realize the world is full of way more things than you are capable of seeing in a lifetime. It sparks a desire to see as much of the world as possible and meet new people who may not live very similar lives as you do. After all, we don't live in a one-size-fits-all kind of world. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Claire and I am also involved in York's International Club. Our club has been exposed to many cultures through presentations, activities, and projects, which really helps to educate us. Although we're learning a lot from this, it is evident that we could expand our knowledge in a way we could never do in an after-school meeting by actually traveling to another country. In talking more about the benefits of this student travel program, we know that the trip will give all of us a more profound understanding of the Latino culture, which is a significantly represented ethnicity in District 205, but one that many students are unfamiliar with. Students will be able to make lifelong connections, encouraging future travel, and like stated before, it can lead to an interest in studying abroad for college and for our future careers. By traveling to Costa Rica, students will gain a higher level of understanding, tolerance, and acceptance of other cultures, as well as increased personal responsibility and independence while traveling. Also, this can be extra beneficial for students taking Spanish because it gives us an opportunity to apply and improve our knowledge of the language in a native setting, allowing us to extend learning beyond the classroom. If approved, we will also be engaging in three days of volunteering in the community by going to a local Costa Rican school, teaching an English class, providing the locals with much-needed supplies, and learning how Costa Ricans attend and learn in schools with minimal resources. This trip will be a very eye-opening experience for students since we will be given an opportunity to work closely with Costa Rican locals and gain perspective on the way they live their lives. We again ask you to consider the overwhelming amount of benefits this trip has to offer for all the students and chaperones involved.
Hello, how are you? My name's Kristen Boxel and I have twins with Williams Syndrome that go to York High School. And before coming to the meeting tonight, we had our York-Dukes Special Olympics basketball team award ceremony. And I thought that it would be nice and it would be appropriate to just come and share some of the highlights of the season and just to express the team's gratitude from the parent's perspective and the athlete's perspective. This is our second year. Last year, we had one win. We had five wins this year. Our team made absolute amazing progress. Great group of kids, great coaches, great peer volunteers. I thank Rob Wagner, Kathy Kostek, Diana Smith, Drew McGuire. It was just an amazing experience. I'm very grateful. My boys have been participating in Special Olympics since they were eight, and I always dreamed that maybe York would have a team one day, and we do. And we have six seniors that are graduating, so we have some open slots coming up. And I'd really urge you next year to maybe come and watch a game. They're very exciting, they're very entertaining, and you will not be disappointed. So I just wanted to thank you and the community and everyone, so.
Thanks. I know it's our policy to not comment on things that are talked about at public comment, but I'm hoping the Board will indulge me because the vast majority of tonight's public comment were made by our most important constituency, and that's our students. First of all, I want to tell each one of you girls, it takes a lot of courage to come in front of the Board of Education. It takes a lot of courage to stand up in front of a group of people and make your case. And you each did a beautiful job tonight, so thank you for coming. There is one thing I want to clarify, though. I've been on the Board, I believe this is my seventh year, and I have no recollection of an international trip ever coming to the Board for approval. So please, don't go around telling people that in the past, unless you're talking about more than seven years ago, because for that I can't comment on, that it was denied by the Board. What I want to do is encourage you to work with the York Administration and have them work with the Central Office Administration and bring it to us. And we'll discuss it. So I want to encourage you, you've got our attention, work through the proper channels, and you never know what will happen. So thank you for coming. And I also want to encourage, you know, after we take our little short break, I realize you guys all have important stuff to do, and we demand a lot of our high school students, so not looking for you to stay for the whole Board meeting. So thank you, thank you. I appreciate the Board allowing me that.
Yeah, we need to end public comment. If there's any other public comment, would anyone like to come forward? Okay. Okay. Well, you can't comment now.
Okay, so last year, we actually, it was International Club, Italian Clubs, Spanish Club, and I think French Club. We proposed a trip to, I think it was Italy, France, Spain, but, and, yeah, that was last year, and was it denied last year? And then, okay, Dr. Purno, like he said that it was okay. And so this year, we, to include like everyone, not just Italian, French, Spanish Club, like Chinese Club and like other clubs, we proposed a Costa Rica plan, and that was denied. So then we talked to Ms. Smith about it and we met with her, and she was okay with the plan, but she said that it was denied by the superintendent, so we just... And then I emailed Mr. Moyer and he said that we talked about it at the Board, so... Or I have the email button. He said, "Not just..."
You said you discussed it with the Board and you ruled a no. Was it not discussed?
I discussed it with our Cabinet administratively extensively at least two meetings about the relative pros and cons and our concerns that emerged, and we decided that it was not something that we felt that we could endorse. It did not go to the Board of Education.
Is there a reason why I didn't reach the Board of Education? I was just immediately denied after the pros and cons? Our procedure for public comment is we don't respond at the public comment. It's a chance for us to hear from the community and then respond appropriately after the Board meeting. Okay, thanks. Any other public comments? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on to approval of Board meeting minutes. Are there any corrections to January 25th, 2016, January 26th, 2016, or February 9th, Okay, hearing none, those minutes will stand as presented. Superintendent's Consent Agenda. Are there any items that Board members would like to remove from the consent agenda?
I'd like to remove Item D, Approval of the Bid.
Any others? Okay. Is there a motion to approve the remaining items on the consent agenda?
I move to approve the Superintendent's Consent Agenda, Items A through C.
Moved by Jim, seconded by Karen. I guess we need a roll call vote.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mrs. Stufen?
Yes.
Mr. McDonough?
Yes.
Dr. Harrell?
Yes.
Ms. Bastido?
Yes.
Mrs. Eubner?
Yes, it's six ayes, no nays, that motion passes. Okay, Item D, we need a motion. Yeah, we need a motion for Item D.
I move that the Board of Education approve bid number 1603 for the purchase of musical instruments from the vendors listed below and the amounts shown. Music and Arts Centers, $5,254, Sam Ash, $2,460, Washington Music Center, $1,477.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, moved by John, seconded by Jim.
I wanted to pull that off and tell the Administration, just what I told them in an email earlier today, that I thought this bid tabulation shows evidence that they're making a procurement process work and getting maximum value for the taxpayer, their tax dollars. And I think that's something that we should recognize publicly, they're doing a good job. I want to say thank you.
Any other discussion?
Well, I just want to recognize that Adrian Garland did all the work on these bid documents, and she's been in the business office for 27 years, and she's been doing this for a long time, and she does a great job on this type of work.
And I think a lot of it goes by unnoticed, and I just wanted to recognize it publicly.
Thanks, John.
Roll call vote.
Mr. McDonough?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mrs. Stufen?
Yes.
Dr. Harrell?
Yes.
Ms. Bastido?
Yes.
Mrs. Eubner?
Yes, it's six ayes, no nays, that motion passes. Superintendent's Action Items.
First item is the restructuring of the SASED Special Education Cooperative. They're changing fiscal agents. This requires them to change a governance structure, or change, I guess, the membership implications because of the new structure, which means that they are asking the local districts to approve a resolution that includes a different type of governing structure to accommodate this. So the recommended action is that the Board of Education approve this resolution to amend the Article of Agreement with SASED.
I need a motion for the SASED item.
I move that the Board of Education approve the resolution to amend SASED's Article of Agreement and the legal entity status.
Is there a second? Okay, moved by Margaret, seconded by Jim. Any discussion?
Just a reminder that this was a topic that was discussed, I believe, at our last Board meeting where Kathy went in and explained that there will be effectively no change to our programming, that this was pretty much purely a governing change, a SASED internal governing change.
Yes.
Just to summarize, I had some discussions with Dave and with Kathy about this because it, and I mentioned this at the last time, it seemed a little strange the way there were two boards and how do you divide, I mean, we're used to seeing one board. Dave says that in the past, he's worked in a two-board structure like this where the Board of Control, which is the Advisory Board, is made up of administrators, gets into a lot of nuts and bolts, it vets the budget, and then the budget ultimately gets approved by public officials who sit on the Board of Governance.
Will be the Board of Governance.
Those are not identical concepts. The Board of Governance was made up of the board members of the various members. It just seemed a little strange to me, I did a little bit of digging, asked basically the Administration, "Does this work for you? Are you going to get the services in the form that's efficient for you?" And they seem to think that it can work. There are some questions that I still have about, I guess there are a couple districts out there who've been asking questions about the division between these two boards and how it works, and I just ask you to look in and follow up with those, you know, I can give you those board, those district numbers again, you can follow up, because it is their administration that's raising those questions, so you probably can talk more directly to them and that. I have no problem supporting this, the Administration's recommendation, provided they just are comfortable themselves with that division of responsibility between the boards.
And with the addition of this structure, it requires, currently, Dave, our Superintendent, sits on the Board of Controls. With the Governance Board, a board member will sit on the Governance Board. So we'll have two people going to SASED meetings, just so that we're clear if we pass this, what the expectations are, the responsibilities.
And a clarification, I understand that a board member would be at the Governance Meeting, which would occur approximately twice a year? Did I make that up or more? Okay, so the board member would be at the Governance Meeting approximately twice a year, and SASED meetings occur more frequently, which would be once a month. Okay, thank you.
We don't have to decide right now, but if Board members can think about their commitment for the Governing Board.
I believe Emily Bastido is our Board Rep, and I think until...
No, I'm not.
You're not? What happened?
Like you, I served a year as the SASED Board Rep, but I'm no longer, I'm not currently the SASED...
So we don't have any Board Rep?
Correct. Because it was decided because of the structure that it really, it didn't make sense for a board member to be the representative, the way it was formally structured, it really made sense for an administrator to go, so.
Will we change all our assignments in April? Will this thing go into effect before we change our... Okay, then someone else is going to have the fun of, or the reduced fun of, attending SASED meetings.
Okay, so this is a roll call? Oh, it's a resolution, okay, go ahead.
Dr. Harrell?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Bastido?
Yes.
Mr. McDonough?
Yes.
Mrs. Stufen?
Yes.
Mrs. Eubner?
Yes, it's six ayes, no nays, that motion passes. Okay, we have several donations. Did you want to introduce them?
The first one is for $667.86 worth of art supplies at Edison Elementary School.
I'll do the motion. I move that the Board of Education approve the acceptance of the donation from the Edison School PTA in the amount of, let's just call it $668, to purchase art supplies. This donation is accepted in accordance with Policy 880, Gifts to the District.
Is there a second?
Second?
Moved by Jim, seconded by Margaret. Do you want to say thank you?
I just want to say thank you to the Edison PTA, who does a great job of supporting the students at Edison, and thank you very much for this gift.
Yes.
Dr. Harrell?
Yes.
Mrs. Stufen?
Yes.
Mr. McDonough?
Yes.
Ms. Bastido?
Yes.
Mrs. Eubner?
Yes, it's six ayes, no nays, that motion passes. There's a donation from Lincoln School. Did you want to take that?
This is $7,500 worth of classroom rugs. These would be used in the classrooms during the elementary reading blocks, or whatever else they want to use them for when they sit on the floor, I guess.
I move that the Board of Education approve acceptance of the donation from Lincoln Elementary School in the amount not to exceed $7,500 to purchase classroom rugs. This donation is accepted in accordance with Policy 880, Gifts to the District.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, moved by Karen, seconded by Jim.
So, thank you, Lincoln School, thank you, the parents and community for helping out our students and our learning. I know that Lincoln School has a couple of those rugs. They're a lot more durable, they last a lot longer...
They're a lot more durable, they're, they last a lot longer, and so it's a really good investment for our students, and they can have rugs for a lot longer than a couple, a year or two is what it, what it sounds like. Since I'm a school liaison, I kind of, I was at a PTA meeting when they talked about it, so there's a lot of benefits that you typically don't know about.
Mrs. Stufen?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Dr. Harrell?
Yes.
Ms. Bestido?
Yes.
Mr. McDonough?
Yes.
Mrs. Eubner?
Yes, six ayes, no nays. The motion passes. We have another donation from Lincoln, Lincoln School.
Okay, this is from the Dad's Club. Two adjustable basketball backboards, not to exceed $3,000.
I move that the Board of Education approve acceptance of the donation to Lincoln Elementary School from the Dad's Club in an amount not to exceed $3,000 for two adjustable basketball backboards. This donation is accepted in accordance with Policy 880, Gifts to the District.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, moved by Karen, seconded by Margaret. Go ahead.
Again, thank you to Lincoln School and the PTA for organizing this donation for our students and our school and the community. And it will certainly help, as we heard from public comments, you know, all the students and get more students to fill in for the six seniors that are, that won't be on the team for Special Olympics since they're, because they're graduating. Thank you.
Yes.
Dr. Harrell?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. McDonough?
Yes.
Ms. Bestido?
Yes.
Mrs. Eubner?
Yes, it's six ayes, no nays. The motion passes. We have another donation. Go ahead, Emily. She can just start it.
Go ahead.
Jackson School PTA, the Jackson School Student Council, in the amounts of $41,000 and $4,000 respectively. These donations will be used for upgrading the Jackson School Playground. This donation is accepted in accordance with Policy Number 880, Gifts to the District.
A second?
I'll second.
Okay, moved by Emily, seconded by John.
I just wanted to say thank you very much to the Jackson PTA and the Student Council and all the parents and the community at Jackson. Everyone is very excited to get rid of the wood chips on the playground, and there was a lot of fundraising going on, and the principal even shaved his head completely bald, like Chris Walton bald, whenever they reached their goal. And the kids loved it, the whole community got behind it, and I just want to say thank you to everyone at Jackson for this generous donation.
Yes.
Mr. McDonough?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Dr. Harrell?
Yes.
Mrs. Stufen?
Yes.
Mrs. Eubner?
Yes, six ayes, no nays. The motion passes. We're going to handle the next donation at a future meeting. Let's move on to Superintendent's Communication.
Okay, thank you, everybody, for having me tonight, extending your evening an extra five minutes. I'd like to welcome everybody else who's here as well. When I interviewed for this position as Superintendent for District 205, I immediately recognized the community committed to providing a great education for students, and I spoke about two major concepts at that time. One being the moral imperative of raising the bar and closing the achievement gap for all students, and the second being the need for the district to develop a comprehensive plan. We're a little more than halfway through this school year, and so it seems to me to be a good time to reflect on what this means and what we've accomplished to date. So, am I pointing it? Yeah, am I pointing it at that? Doesn't matter? Okay, there we go, all right. So, the first concept, there are really two major points to consider in this. The first is that all means all. And oftentimes, we think about all being, well, we're going to raise the achievement of some of our lower achieving students. But really, when we think about all, there are groups in the middle of the achievement spectrum that may perhaps not be as engaged as they could be. There are kids at the top of the achievement spectrum who may not be as challenged as they could be, so I think it's really important that we consider, when we, when we say all, we really truly do mean all. And the second thing is, is that the moral imperative is not an imperative if it's not actually realized. So, when we talk about this, we use, we use the term "the moral imperative realized intentionally" because we want people to realize that these words have meaning, and that it has to be actually attained for it to mean anything at all. Otherwise, it's just words. So, this is a visual of what we mean by the moral imperative. And what it is, is a shift from kind of an old-school concept of sort and select, meaning that some kids will learn if they just did their homework, or if their parents just read to them when they were little, or whatever the case may be, and some kids will go to college, and some kids might not, and they'll just get a job or whatever. The issue being now, though, that some of these jobs are disappearing, and other jobs that are there require higher levels of skills and abilities to retrain and relearn over the course of a lifetime. And so, the shift from sort and select is a shift in which, instead of accepting that some students do not meet standards, we, we shift our concept to the moral imperative of all students' learning. So, what it is, is it's a move away from the bell curve to a mountain curve. So, even if we still have a statistical normal curve, what we have is, we have more students achieving at higher levels, with far fewer students falling behind basic proficiency expectations. The shift in mindset is critical to ensure future-ready graduates will have the opportunity to participate successfully in a knowledge-driven, rapidly-changing global economy. Focus 205 will provide the foundation for a comprehensive plan for the district, and the district hosted four community engagement sessions this fall. The facilitating team will issue a report summarizing the findings from those sessions at the March 8 board meeting. My goal is to ensure that any future plan reflect the interrelatedness of improving student achievement, which we're going to talk about in greater detail in a bit, ensuring long-term financial sustainability, and the manner in which future facility upgrades will support both concepts and support future-ready learning as well as resource efficiencies. So, as a bridge to this more comprehensive plan, the district developed and the board approved two student achievement objectives as a focal point, driving the work, professional development, and resource allocation in the district. And these objectives have been standing agenda items at board meetings throughout the year. And they are, as you see, develop a balanced assessment system and improve assessment literacy throughout the district, and increase student engagement in all grades EC-12. When I arrived, our team took the existing priorities and organized them into these areas to try to leverage effectiveness of our work, and provide for greater clarity and meaning, and delineate expected timelines and outcomes. Using these two areas as anchors will help provide consistency over time. While providing appropriate flexibility for future directions, it's unlikely that either will diminish in importance anytime soon, meaning that teachers can delve deeper into their learning without fear that the target will jump around on them. As a point of emphasis, the term "assessment" is not meant to equate to more testing. In fact, as the district continues to ensure consistent curriculum implementation and improve its ability to assess effectively at the classroom level, the amount of instructional time that is compromised by traditional testing should be reduced. The objectives are rooted in the principles outlined in the Community Compact. The words "Community Compact" were chosen carefully to extend our promise to the community for what the instructional program in District 205 will encompass when fully realized, and also to acknowledge the importance of community and ensuring strong public schools. The Community Compact and Student Achievement objectives are available on my page on the district website. Where each of these current principles that are reflected in this visual, we go into in much greater detail. So, we're just going to click on that link, just to give you an idea. Anybody who's interested can access this page, they can read more about what those various different terms mean, and also, they can take a look at the clicking, clicking on those live links, where the student objective, the action plan for the year is outlined with the outcomes, the action steps, the timelines, designated administrator responsibilities, and all of those types of information that we're not going to go over today in any, or tonight in any great detail, but it is there. And if you scroll down just a little bit, you'll see where some of those concepts, like rigor or guaranteed and viable curriculum, or formative assessment, or other things like that in the visual, are defined more specifically. So, that is available on the district website under the Superintendent's page. So, can we, we can go, okay, so we're back, all right. So, these are really, if you synthesize the information, these are really what, this is really what the Community Compact is, is saying in a simplified version. The goal is to develop a system that supports high-quality teachers in every classroom. We need to continue to invest in building the capacity of our instructional personnel. We recognize that even the best of the best will not be as effective as they could and would like to be without a strong system to support their efforts. And therefore, we are working hard to also develop leadership throughout the district. We know that the work of public schools is becoming so complex that we must also include a coherent district-wide view and embrace a shift from individual quality to group quality in order to realize the moral imperative. Professional learning communities model provides a framework for us to develop the culture to be successful in our efforts to effectively meet the needs of all students. It's predicated upon three big ideas, which are ensuring that students learn, a culture of collaboration, and a focus on results, and four critical questions. What do we want our students to learn? How will we know if each student has learned it? How will we respond when some students do not learn? And how can we extend and enrich learning for those who have demonstrated proficiency? Additionally, we are ensuring that our approach to improving student achievement is research-driven. Most people can find research to support just about anything. However, effect-sized research is a meta-analysis research of thousands of studies comprising millions of students throughout the world. It translates instructional approaches into percentile achievement gains. John Hattie is a current leader in this field. The District 205 Student Achievement Goals and Professional Development reflect the practices that have the greatest potential to positively impact student learning. There have been significant accomplishments so far this year, and this is due primarily to the hard work of teachers, staff, and administrators at all grade levels. So, I think it's important that we thank everybody for their efforts this year, because some of this has been extremely significant and good work, and in many cases, a monumental undertaking. We've had, we bit off a lot this year, partially because we had to and partially because we chose to, but it's been a lot, and people have done a terrific job. And so, I've highlighted a few of these big rocks, so to speak, on these next two slides. But what I've also tried to do is show some examples of how these actually relate to the Community Compact and the principles that were just reflected on those previous slides, and in the Student Achievement objectives. So, you see MLI Year 1 in grades 6 through 12, that's the Chromebooks, so that has a big relationship to the areas in red. Student engagement, personalized learning, future-ready skills, next practices, rigor. And so, I'm not going to read all of this. These slides are available in, in the board meeting agenda, but that's, that's how they're laid out. So, a lot of work on common assessments, which relate to guaranteed and viable curriculum, balanced assessment, et cetera. A lot of work on our ELA curriculum for grades K through 8, and that is going to be a much more engaging curriculum, and it's, it's going to allow for a lot more student choice. It's going to be aligned with the new standards for, and, you know, there are a variety, a variety of other good work, and that work has been done almost exclusively by teachers. A lot of work on the Danielson rubrics, and what these are, what we use for our teacher evaluation system, and it helps us develop a common vocabulary for how we define what high-quality instruction looks like, and how we provide feedback and support for teachers to accomplish that. Some of our leadership work, which has been reported regularly, relate to two primary works, Cultures Built to Last by Defore and Fulon, and The Principle by Fulon, and then the Middle School Task Force work. There will be some reports coming up in March. At this point, we think that the report from the District Management Council will go to the Board of Education at the second March board meeting. That's the schedule we're looking at right now. And so, that is really going to help us reflect on how we can provide for continuous improvement at the middle school level. And there's been a lot more that's not there. The benefits of achieving these intended outcomes are many, and focus on the cultural shifts of moving from what is being taught to what is being learned, from my students to our students, from individual quality to group quality, from dissemination of facts to the ability to think critically, from lagging whole-group data to timely individualized data. And what it really represents is a move from great to greater. And so, you see some of the benefits that I listed on that slide, and all of the benefits that are described there. Again, there's an interrelatedness to this work that I think I want to reinforce and emphasize. None of these things are meant to be in isolation. They're all part of a greater whole. So, so some of these things, student engagement, student-centered, you see there's a big focus on the student in, in the new kind of concept, moves from content to the focus on the student engagement and the student learning. And that type of a shift is what, is what reinforces the future-ready types of skills that you hear us talking about regularly at these meetings. So, focus on literacy, focus on defining what we want students to know, how we're going to measure that, collaboration, highly collaborative environments, teachers working together, using the group to move the group, and really, truly, the middle school, what we hope to come out of that work, and it's a very collaborative endeavor between teachers and administrators in the district, is we, we want anybody that thinks of middle school education to say, "Well, if we want to figure out what that's supposed to look like, we know where to go. We'll just look at Elmhurst and what they do, because they're the best." And so, that's what we want, that's what we want this to result in a couple years down the road, looking back. And so, kind of moving forward, these are principles that will continue to guide our approach. I've touched on some of them throughout the presentation. The focus is on building culture around the moral imperative and developing an organization in which learning is truly the work. Nostalgia is the deadly combination of nostalgia and amnesia. None of us really want to turn in cable for rabbit ears, or cell phones for phone booths, or be living with our parents again, for that matter. So, while we respect tradition, honor what is good, and take the best forward with us, also, we commit to new ideas with an eye to the future. It's not an either-or proposition, and our children are counting on it. So, that's an update at this point of where we are in terms of achieving our outcomes related to our student achievement priorities, and we have, I could proudly say, done a lot of really good work so far to date this year.
Go ahead.
I don't have questions at this point, but I wanted to thank you, Dave, for providing an update, not only to us as a board, but, you know, to the audience and the community. There's a lot of progress that has been made at multiple levels. There's a lot of progress that have been made at multiple levels, from, you know, working with administration, central office buildings, you know, the staff, teachers, and moving us forward. And I know that that's what we heard loud and clear from every constituent group as we were hiring a new superintendent. So thank you for providing an update. So, I'm going to say so soon, mid-year, which we haven't had in the past, so thank you.
The mystery words to me are always student engagement. Just kind of want to kind of get a framework. It always seems to come bundled and just for the layman, the parents that are out there, can you just unbundle this concept of student engagement? Because I went and did a little reading on my own and came up, and I just want to understand, you know, your framework when you think of student engagement.
Yeah, we're actually, as we have better data on student learning and can personalize instruction to meet student needs, you know, a lot of this stuff works hand in hand. But what a lot of people would, in previous times, confuse for student engagement was if they saw on-task behavior and students were complying, then we said they were engaged. But what we really realize is that that's not necessarily engagement. So, an example of student engagement could be the difference between asking a student what they're working on and having them say, "My math worksheet," versus being able to identify the standard that they're working on and being able to tell that to you. It could be the idea of being able to apply information to real-world settings as opposed to just perhaps regurgitating information. A lot of it has to do with student choice. So you wouldn't necessarily, not all students would have to read the same novel to comprehend certain types of deeper learning themes and master certain standards. So there's always that element of student choice involved. It's kind of more of a shift from the teacher to the student. Those are some examples. We actually will go into that, continue to extend that more deeply next year and take a look at the P-21 framework. Take a look at moving from the Chromebook implementation to more substitution, from more substitution to more of a situation where maybe our Chromebooks are being utilized more sophisticated manner. So, you know, there's a lot of things to it. I don't know if that helps.
Thank you.
I do have a quick question. First of all, just to echo what Karen said, this is a great presentation to sum up where we've been the first half of the year and just kind of a roadmap for what the game plan is. So we greatly appreciate that. A term that is new to me and I struggle with to understand it, and you explained it once, but you got to put me in the remedial class and explain it again, is the concept of effect-sized research. If you could just define that for me so I understand. Okay.
Let me try to do, you said you wanted layman's terms, right? So you saw the, you saw the normal curve. So an effect size of 1.0 is the relation of student achievement gains to one standard deviation. So from, if you were at the 50th percentile, going to the 84th percentile. That would be one standard deviation of growth. So effect-sized research translates learning gains into the equivalent of standard deviation units. So if you took an effect size of .4, that's roughly the equivalent of one year's worth of growth. So when John Hattie does his research, for example, if it doesn't meet the barrier of .4 or above, he would say it's not something that necessarily washes out because if a kid sits in a seat and you do this and it's a year's worth of growth and you do this and it's a year's worth of growth, but if it's something that can influence more than, and so without getting into necessarily specifics, it tries to help you figure out which practices truly have the greatest impact on improving student learning versus which practices that we may have thought that we always did, but we maybe come to learn more now and realize that's not necessarily true. And so what it does to get to that number is instead of taking this individual isolated study and this individual isolated study and another one and another one and basing it and say, "On this study," it's research of the research. So it's a meta-analysis of all this research and then it sees, see it's which of those types of things, you know, end up having the greatest impact. And the ones that do are always the things related to formative assessment, feedback, students being able to monitor their own learning and accurately predict how they're going to do, how they're going to perform. All of those types of things that are kind of reflected in the way we chose to approach our professional development and set up our student achievement objectives. We base those on what we have available to us as the best research that we know right now.
Thank you.
Well, I should have went first because Jim took my question. I was specifically going to ask about those key principles. And you're right, the first three, the slide that talks about high-quality teachers in every classroom, build leadership throughout the system, and professional learning communities, those were, you know, obviously, those were pretty obvious. And I was trying to understand how effect-sized research comes into these key principles. And if I could paraphrase, excluding the idea of the meta-analysis and the benefit of the meta-analysis, it's essentially taking what is, what has been proven best practices, layman's term, what's been proven best practices and trying to apply those in those key principles.
That's correct.
Thank you.
I have one thing. You presented a lot of this to us in August at a board meeting. And then many of these principles were talked about at the Focus 205 Community Engagement Sessions. And I like how we're coming back to this, too. I think this is an important document to look at frequently throughout the year. And we wanted to have more student focus at our board meetings and this is allowing us to do that so we can keep our focus on students. Sometimes it's difficult, we have so many competing things to look at, but I feel confident that our focus remains on students with this work. Okay, are there any board communications?
All right. A couple things. First of all, it's Fine Arts Week at York. And if you go to yorkfaw.com, you can see a list of all sorts of really exciting things that are happening at York. So everybody, please, see what you can do, even if you can just go there and cheerlead, find some way to get involved. York has an amazing fine arts world there. We're welcoming Erin, who is going to be our leader, and she has an amazing fine arts background as well that she can apply and to continue this culture of fine arts in this community, that's just excellent. So I just wanted to say that. Another thing, wanted to talk to you about from the sublime to the ridiculous, I turned to our negotiations regarding stormwater with the city of Elmhurst. And we had another public, public meeting that occurred. And I just wanted to give you guys an update of where we were. I got myself up to speed so I could talk intelligently. Hopefully, I did so at that public meeting. I'm not sure if that was the case. As far as the Madison Agreement, it should be going forward. They want to start work as soon as possible and they're working with Mr. Schu and Welton and Mr. Moyer to, Dr. Moyer, to coordinate as early a start as they can, realizing that optimal is when the kids are all gone after school's over, but they want to try to get started earlier, but they're going to try and coordinate that. As for the Brian gravel lot, there was some discussion. They really want to expedite construction and authorization of the Brian Agreement. In other words, a board resolution, so they are asking for that thing to be negotiated as quickly as possible. However, they're not completed with final design yet and therefore are not ready to bid the project yet. However, I said that we would try to meet their timelines. If they present a timeline, we'll try to meet it so that they can get the most effective use of the construction season possible. It does raise the question, I think we had heard board consensus about seeing how Madison works before, I'm sorry, I'm reaching back to Madison. Let me just finish, let me just finish Brian lot. They would like to get started right away, get it in the ground. I explained with regard to future projects that the board really wanted to go one project at a time and further that the board wanted to see how Madison, a dual-use project, would go forward before we authorized others so that we knew the full impact it would have on the use of the properties by our kids. There was some concern. Go ahead. Sorry.
I was just going to say, I don't think Madison is in the true sense of the word "dual-use," but I know what you mean. It's, we wanted to see a project where we took a field that, you know, and lowered it.
Well, it is dual-use. The use may not be intensive. The educational recreational use may not be as intensive as some of the other sites we're looking at, but it will give us some guideline of how using a property for both stormwater and for another purpose might work. That being said, the Madison, while it will be constructed this year, it will not be finished until later in the year and they're concerned that waiting and seeing a year would turn into a longer period. I said I really couldn't answer. The board had said they want to see how things want to go before we commit to something that could impair the use of our properties without an understanding of the risks that are present. And so that's one of the things that we will have to determine is when are we comfortable enough with what has happened with one pilot project to determine that, yes, we're willing to make a commitment to other projects? That was an item of discussion. That's pretty much it. They said they wanted to present a timeline for each project and I said if they present one, we will examine it and administration will let us know if that's something that is, something that they're able to meet, both in terms of the logistics of the project itself and the preparation and approval of an agreement by the board. And that's pretty much it.
Any comments? All right, thanks for the update. Thanks for attending the meeting. We have three upcoming meetings. March 8, the Board of Education meeting, March 15, Finance and Operations Committee meeting, and March 22, Board of Education meeting. Okay, we have unfinished business for closed session, so I'd like a motion to go back into closed session?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, moved by Karen, seconded by Emily. We are going back into closed session. Employment of employee and approval of closed session minutes. We have three dates that we didn't get to approve.